All right. So that was a quick overview of the public school facilities chapter, and I'm going to turn it over to Jessica Bella, our deputy director, to give you an overview of the managing growth chapter.
Kim, before we do that, are we going to be asking questions on both?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mary. I know we touched on managing growth issues a little bit earlier, so now we're going to really dig in. Next slide, please. This chapter really covers, you know, the residential growth trends as well as our growth targets over the next 20 years. We will discuss how the adequate public facility ordinance paces new housing development, as well as addressing our transportation infrastructure and public facility needs like schools. And it concludes with the policy and action items for managing growth in context of our housing, school, and transportation needs, while also achieving all the other goals that we have in the plan. Next slide. So, a little background on APFO. As you know, Howard County adopted our adequate public facility ordinance around 30 years ago. It is a growth management tool that helps pace and direct growth in a manner consistent with an adopted general plan. And by tying development approvals to certain public facility levels and standards, it provides the lead time necessary for investment in schools, as well as setting mechanisms for making the needed improvements in our transportation infrastructure. Next slide, please. So, part of what the general plan does is it looks at past growth trends and projects those forward to determine, are we growing the way that we have in the past? Do we anticipate any changes? Growth has significantly slowed in Howard County since the 80s. That trend continued in the past 20 years, since the early aughts. And especially since 2018, we've really seen further decline, sort of in response to market conditions, as well as policy changes in the APFO program for how allocations were handled. So, the next slide really talks about residential growth targets between 2020 and 2040. As you know, the general plan provides guidance on where we want to target growth and envisions what that should look like to achieve the goals of the plan. Part of that is setting growth targets for residential development and determining the pace at which those should come online. Given that the plan places a large emphasis on preserving existing agricultural parks and open space land, and most of our future growth will be realized through redevelopment of existing areas that have previously been developed, we're going to focus on activity centers. And similar to what has been done for downtown Columbia, what's covered in this slide is the growth targets for Gateway are going to be explored as part of sort of a more focused master plan, more of like a sector plan. Next slide. So, sorry, I scrolled down too much and it jumped. All right. Our housing allocations. So, Hoco by Design includes its proposed housing allocation chart. And what this chart really does is it manages growth in four geographic areas, which are tied to the character areas on the future land use map. These include downtown Columbia, the activity centers, which are made up of a bunch of different types of activity centers, other character areas that are sort of covered in our dynamic neighborhoods chapter, as well as the rural west. The chart includes a set aside beyond the regional areas for green neighborhoods with 150 allocations per year. That's carrying forward a strategy from Plan Howard 2030. And then there's also a new proposed set aside for 150 allocations per year for affordable housing. And the concept behind that set aside is further described in the dynamic neighborhoods chapter. Next slide. And this is the map of those geographic regions, so you can kind of see where we're focusing and targeting those allocations. Next slide, please. So, digging into APFO a little bit more, the school capacity tests. We discussed earlier, in my slide, about how APFO serves as a tool for managing growth and allowing development to move forward in areas that already have existing capacity. And then development projects, when they undergo the APFO school tests during the development review process, we determine if there's existing capacity based on certain thresholds that are outlined in the adequate public facilities ordinance? Ordinance? Sorry. And that is shown on this slide here, showing how many housing units have been placed on hold while we wait for the capacity to come up to certain standards before those development projects can move forward, or they test out after a certain amount of time. And then, next slide. So, the adequate transportation facilities aspect of APFO, it's evaluating development projects for the impacts to roads, specifically looking at their direct impact on traffic patterns within a specific area. The goal of that is to maintain the overall transportation system at a designated level of service. And to do that, the county requires some mitigation efforts if a development wants to move forward and they're having that impact on the patterns. But APFO, up till now, has really been focused on motor vehicle travel with the adoption of our new complete streets policy. We're asking developers to submit pedestrian and bicycle studies and evaluating projects within the context of the complete street policy goals. But APFO is not really designed at this time to move forward with ensuring our development review process incorporates all of those. And we're going to essentially move forward in the future for APFO of kind of looking at a more multimodal approach. Slide, next slide, please. So, as I said, the current APFO model, it really was designed and set up to address larger greenfield development that we had over the last, you know, 30 years. These are larger subdivision projects. Because we know that that's not how we're going to be growing in the future, given the remaining land and all of our other goals for preserving our undeveloped land, the plan calls for APFO, the task force, to consider how we should redesign and retool this growth management tool, given that future development that we're anticipating and what would be appropriate in context of this redevelopment, of a redevelopment model. And for transportation facilities, one of these suggestions that's captured in our policy and action goals is really having APFO consider the larger network benefits that could occur instead of doing spot improvements tied to direct impacts for a project. If instead, we start looking at the overall improvements within a sub-area that can advance goals for the multimodal transportation and address the system as a whole. And that would be through establishing a transportation plan where you have the projects you've identified, and this kind of helps you fill in the gaps or meet the needs that you can't necessarily address through one particular development project. Next slide. So, managing growth into the future. Following the adoption of the plan, as I alluded to, the APFO task force will be convened. This is really an opportunity to comprehensively review and assess APFO. It recognizes that the future type of development will be different. And it will come out with policy recommendations for making sure that APFO is aligned and correctly calibrated to achieve the vision outlined in the general plan. Next slide. So, this goes into those policies and actions that I discussed, and it's one overarching policy, which is essentially, we need to evaluate APFO, and we need to amend it to support the vision of Hoco by Design. And then it goes into the various actions that will fall under that, which is looking at what other jurisdictions who are facing similar situations to what we are facing are doing, and how they recalibrate their APFO tools for infill development and redevelopment. It's about assessing how APFO applies to different kinds of housing units, such as accessory dwelling units. And then looking at the impact of APFO tools on meeting other goals we have for affordable housing, age-restricted housing, missing middle housing, because obviously the costs associated with APFO can impact our ability to bring those types of housing that we most desire online. And then, you can go to the next slide, please. So, APFO in schools really is about collecting our data and making sure that we have a firm understanding of the life cycle of existing and new neighborhoods, the extent to which that new growth actually generates revenues for school infrastructure to support investment, and looking at the school capacity test to see if it can better pace with development in the allocation chart that we had discussed. Moving on. And then, really, the goal for APFO in transportation, it's context-driven, ensuring that we're looking at the overarching system, which might include more of a fee-based approach, and making sure that the APFO standards are not just focused on vehicles, but approaching with a multimodal approach to that. You know, everyone's a pedestrian at some point, and so we want to make sure that our system is designed to support everyone. Next slide. Oh, that's it? We're on. So, at this point, I'm going to hand it back to Mary for closing.
Yeah, I just have a concluding statement. I know there's been a lot of information shared today, a lot of discussion had, and I know we're going to continue to have more discussion. But overall, what we just talked about today was the supporting infrastructure chapter of public school facilities and managing growth. So, within those chapters, hopefully you found that this plan offers guidance for addressing and funding our current and future infrastructure needs, which includes school facilities, offers guidance for pacing and planning for growth in consideration of our schools' housing and multimodal transportation needs. The plan offers predictability, in that most growth is targeted in activity centers, which are very specific locations. And then these specific predictable locations is provided as guidance to HCPSS for long-range capital planning, and also to our county agencies, so that they can plan for our future infrastructure needs in coordination with that future growth. The plan also proposes smaller and differers housing types, which is very responsive to our shifting demographic trends. This includes opportunities for affordable housing, which is especially important for our workforce, our children, who will want to live here after they graduate from high school, and our older adults. And then also, the plan recommends guidance for how we can be fiscally sustainable, and that we need to reckon, there's a recognition that we need to support our maintenance needs. We need to have some equity in our capital planning. We need to fund our general plan priorities while facilitating new growth that generates revenue, such as school surcharge, excise, tax, and development fees. And finally, this plan gives specific guidance to our APFO committee, in that we should be retuning APFO to more effectively manage redevelopment, seek ways for new development to support bike, pedestrian, and transit infrastructure, and support broader projects that would be targeted to sub-geographies. And there's also guidance that encourages the committee to dive deeper into the student generation rates by housing type, so we can really look at new growth, apartment turnover, and resales as we evaluate that aspect. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to take a brief break for lunch, and we'll be back in 15, well, we'll do 18 minutes. That way, we can start at even time. Yeah. All right. See you all soon.
I do.
And we'll begin with D1.
Thank you. My first question goes to the APFO allocation chart that's on table, well, it's called Table 91, and it lists out the 1,500, I think, total homes. Well, here's my question. There's really two. Is, in the slide presentation, it said 1,580. I think in the narrative, it says 1,400. In this chart, it says 1,500 plus 150. There's another chart where you add an affordable housing component. I mean, are these cumulative or included, these extra columns for green neighborhood and affordable housing?
Well, they're cumulative, so they're added to the 1,94. So, it's an additional...
5,000.
Yeah, 5,000 over 26. Yeah, exactly. Right, okay. Yes.
Okay, so it's additive?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, my real problem, probably maybe the thing I hate the most in this whole document, so you can imagine, is you keep saying that most growth is going to be concentrated in the activity center. But that is not what this chart says, particularly if those two columns are additive. Of the categories, yeah, that's the category with the most, but most of the homes are going to go into downtown Columbia, other character areas, rural rest, green neighborhood, affordable housing. You're not concentrating them. And the other problem I have is calling it geographic regions. Other character areas, spread out over the entirety of the PSA line, is not, I don't think, legitimate planning geographic area. This was the problem with the old plan, is there are so many pockets that are so different, you know, depending on what color they are in this chart, that it almost has no meaning. Everything comports with the plan, because you can do whatever you want everywhere. I mean, I don't see any difference in this from our prior one, but how can you call a green neighborhood a geographic region, a geographic planning region?
So, the green neighborhood column isn't meant to be an incentive. So, generally, how that has worked in the past is if we are out of housing allocation units, then a developer could pull from the green neighborhoods column and actually build in a way that is perhaps preserving or protecting more environmental features, or maintaining various environmental features on the site, building in a way that is LEED-certified. So, there's a whole scorecard associated with the green neighborhoods program. But it's intended to be a bonus column above, if you run out of other housing allocations. So, it hasn't really been, it's only been used, I believe, for two, we only have two green neighborhoods currently in the county. So, only two have utilized those actual allocations.
But it's not limited by a geography to any particular area of the county. It could be in Lisbon, or it could be in historic Elkridge, or it could be in Laurel.
So, that's really, when we get to the compre-zoning process, that's when you decide what criteria gets pulled down to the parcel level, and sort of what zoning districts are allowed to develop, under what conditions. So, it's, the housing allocations for geographic areas is different than the regulatory requirements that are going to be set up in the compre-zoning process.
Okay, but am I reading this right? You're calling other character areas one of four geographic regions?
Yes. So, the housing allocation chart is just one of the tools that we have that paces growth, right? So, this is just where we say, so there could be, in 2026, there can be 335 housing allocations targeted at downtown Columbia, 600 in the activity center, any one of the activity centers that are identified on the future land use map, and then all other character areas, right? They have up to 365 housing allocations throughout the region, and then, yes, the rural west. So, that's how it's currently defined in this housing allocation chart. Now, of course, before any development proceeds, it not only needs to, we not only need to ensure there are housing allocations, there's also the schools test that's built into our APFO code. So, they would also have to pass the schools test.
That'll be round two. The schools test, and God knows, I've tried legislation every one of the five years I've been here, doesn't do anything. I mean, even as you stay repeatedly in here, it takes about the same time to get out of the development process as the school test imposes on a given development. So, as far as I'm concerned, the school test is annolity. But again, going back to this notion of geographic regions, I mean, if I add 150 green neighborhoods into the 365 other character areas, I'm already above what's been allocated, right? Or I'm close to what's been allocated for activity centers. Doesn't this mean that like all 365 units in 2026 could be along Route 40, and none anywhere else in the PSA?
Not necessarily. I think I'm going to, so back to what Ms. Bella was saying, is that there will then be, once we get through this general plan adoption, we'll have to go through a comprehensive rezoning, where will we evaluate all of our zoning districts and our zoning regulations? There are many zoning districts that are not necessarily planning to change all that significantly. It's really just the activity centers where we'll see most significant rezoning. So, within, once we get into the zoning, that's where the real development densities will be determined.
Okay, again, that the math does not support a statement that most of the development will be in activity centers. Most of the development will be in areas other than the activity centers, according to these tables of allocations, if that's really where, if all of this actually got built. And so, I don't, parcel by parcel, we're going to rack up what we've allowed in a maximum basis of, what, 365 in year 2026? We're going to...
No, not necessarily. I don't think that, it's been years since we've drawn down all of our housing allocations. And with regards to the green neighborhood set aside and the affordable housing set aside, again, those are intended to be sort of above and beyond what's already permitted. So, a green neighborhood, who's to say a green neighborhood couldn't be an activity center as well?
You. Well, it would be an activity center in this plan, if it was going to be an activity center, right?
So, a green neighborhood is a program that we're going to talk about when we get to ecological health, that gives, that again, awards additional housing allocations if you follow certain criteria that pertains to environmental protections or maintenance. So, there is no requirement that says a green neighborhood has to be in another character area, it has to be an activity center. We need to reevaluate the green neighborhoods program, so it's a little bit more applicable to the goals and policies outlined here in Hoco by Design. So, how can we retool that? So, one way we may be looking at retooling that program is how does a green neighborhood, how do these bonus housing allocations apply potentially to activity centers? So, it's not necessarily, those green neighborhood allocations aren't necessarily going in other character areas, not necessarily going in the activity center column. They're just, it's an additional incentive to try to encourage more environmentally responsible, sustainable development.
And then I would add, I'm not quite sure it's correct that most of the units will, or a big portion will be in the other character areas. I mean, if you consider downtown Columbia, which is like, you know, similar to an activity center...
Mr. Brown, that's not what I said. I said most of the development will be in areas other than the activity centers.
Okay. What I'm saying is, activity centers total 9,000 units, other character areas total 4,475. Most of the affordable housing will likely be in activity centers, which, if you add the 2,250 to that, and so I still think the majority of the future units would be in the activity centers.
Okay. I mean, I can read the chart to you. Most, why, I'm sorry for the follow-up. Why would most affordable housing only be in activity centers?
Because most of the growth, if you look at the future land use map, and most of the land use availability, is going to be in the activity centers. And so, of the 150 set aside of the affordable housing, the majority of the, per year, annually per year, the majority of those are likely to be, more than likely to be in the activity centers, because that's where most of the growth is considered. And affordable housing, the intent of affordable housing is to be inclusive with market rate units. So, for example, if you have an activity center with 1,000 market rate units, you're also going to have, mixed in with those, the affordable housing units as well. So, that's, I'm just saying that that's what, pointing that point out, that the plan calls for most future growth to be in the activity centers.
Ms. Walsh.
I can add the mark...
Wait, hold on. Can you help me understand, because I'm adding them up? And I get, when I add up downtown Columbia and activity centers, I get to 12,219.
No, I know, why is downtown Columbia and activity, there are four geographic regions. One is the activity center. And I keep hearing, most growth is going to be in the activity center, most affordable housing is going to be in the activity center. There's another downtown Columbia geographic region. So, if I add downtown Columbia, plus other character areas, plus rural west, plus green neighborhood, plus affordable housing, if that's what I'm supposed to do, then the vast, then it's not even close. Of course, most of the activity and the new development will not be in the activity centers.
Wait, so why do you consider downtown Columbia not similar, why do you consider downtown Columbia to be more similar to, say, a Dunlog Inn than it would be to an activity center?
I don't, I'm just following their nomenclature. I mean, they're talking about four geographic regions. I'm seeing the allocations.
If I may, Ms. Walsh, so the activity centers, downtown Columbia is one of the activity centers. In our dynamic neighborhoods chapter, there's a multitude of different kinds of activity centers. So, this chart broadly compresses many of the activity centers into a single chart for the allocations across those. Downtown Columbia, as well as Gateway, are also activity centers. So, the red and the green are cumulative to the overarching activity center. Other character areas are really reflective of all of the other, all of the other geographic areas within the PSA, and it spreads that allocation across all of those districts. So, it's a significant amount of land, smaller units across a much larger amount of land, versus the activity centers, where you're going significantly more units, concentrated into a smaller amount of land. And then the rural west has an allocation of additional 100 every year. And then, as Ms. Kendall reached out, so those are the geographic regions. And then the green neighborhood and the affordable housing, those are more criteria-based, and then those can apply to any of these, as long as they also meet all of the other requirements that will be within the regulations when those are developed.
Okay. All right. Mr. Newscaster, I have a question for you, and I also just want to thank you for participating today, though I know you haven't been called on a ton. But it kind of goes to the nature of our allocations charts. I think in our history, allocations came first, and then we did APFO. But because we've not actually drawn down on all the allocations, it feels, I guess to me, it feels superfluous at this point, that there's not, I guess, my question is really, when you're looking at other jurisdictions you've looked at, is it common for them to have multiple tools that are all trying to slow down growth that are APFO and allocations? And do they have anything that affirmatively furthers affordable housing goals? Because we have two tools that slow us down, but we don't have any tools that help us achieve our goals. So, your experience in other jurisdictions would be helpful to hear about.
Great, thank you. Just to check, you can hear me, correct?
Yes, we can.
So, it's a good question, and I'll give you a national perspective. And as part of that, I'll tell you, you know, for 26, 27 years, I've been able to write comprehensive plans in 19 different states. Generally speaking, Maryland tends to be on the end of the spectrum of being more prescriptive, more detailed in a general plan than other communities are. They would let things like APFO, concurrency, some of those kind of things blend into their ordinances or other policies that they write as an implementation mechanism for a comprehensive plan or a general plan. So, we have included like a likely impacts analysis, which we did for the scenario planning initiative for you as well, and we would use those impacts to try to right-size infrastructure recommendations or projects that would be good targets moving forward, where we would let some of the more detailed stuff, like target tables and pacing of development, occur more in the APFO ordinance itself. I did actually bring this up and discuss it a little bit during the planning process for the Hoco by Design general plan, but we decided that it was better to do that in the APFO committee, and think about that in that mandate within a year of general plan adoption. My experience has been, at least, that most APFO ordinances that I've either worked on or been able to study, they use the capacity test in order to determine whether a project can be built or not, but they don't use the pacing test, or the phased development, to try to say, this is how much development can occur over a certain amount of time. And a lot of that is because the most important topics that are often covered under an APFO, maybe it's schools, or transportation, or water, or sewer, are more like a stair-step approach to introducing capacity. So, you hold with what you've got, your service delivery is deteriorating, and then all of a sudden, you put in a major improvement, and like a stair-step, it jumps up, and now you have that capacity available for a while, until it needs to be addressed again. And so, the decisions I've been able to see with APFO and the like is more about, do we have capacity or not? And then I'll just say, as a, oh, by the way, where most of the communities that I know about get in trouble is when they take a fee in lieu for APFO, because they're basically saying, it's okay to not have capacity if you pay us. And that's gotten a lot of communities in trouble in different states. But so far, in my experiences, and again, I haven't worked in every state, but having a development phasing chart in a comprehensive plan, you're the first one. Now, you're not the only one, because in the state of Maryland, they like to have them, but again, the state of Maryland tends to be more prescriptive and analytical in their general plan at this time, where others wait until legislation with more detail, like an APFO ordinance or some other implementing mechanism is on the table for discussion.
Thank you. And then just the last part was about whether or not there are communities that you've worked in that have ordinances or documents that actually incentivize and push them to get to their affordable housing goals. Because we have a lot of things that sort of slow us down, but we don't have anything that necessarily drives affordable housing, market rate subsidized or otherwise.
Yes, and I think communities across the country agree that affordable housing is a goal of the community, and one everybody wants to get to in terms of crossing the finish line. The issue that I've seen is the devil's in the deep. The issue that I've seen is the devil's in the details. And so, what happens is, when you reward, incentivize, or something where you, you give them leniency on an APFO requirement, or a concurrency requirement, you can quickly be sued by somebody who is not affordable housing, saying, "Well, technically, they have the same impacts that I do, you're just, you're just ignoring them because of an affordable housing provision." And so some of the places I've worked, they'll say affordable housing can be granted leniency if and when somebody else comes in and basically creates the service, or provides the service on their behalf. So it has been a challenge to create the rational nexus and the proportionate, proportionality of impacts and requirements for affordable versus non-affordable projects when they come to you, if it's truly a capacity test that's on the table.
Well, within that, though, like, when we look at our analysis, one-bedroom units don't drive a ton of children to our schools. So I could see those units having less of an impact, and us prioritizing those units, since they don't have an impact on our schools, whereas a large, single-family home development would have a significant impact on our schools.
And to that, where you're going is the logic I would recommend, which is actually cool.
Oh, no, you just cut out on, that's the logic I'd recommend.
Regardless of how much the unit costs.
Sorry, Mr. Newscaster, could you repeat that again?
Well, I was just saying, that's, that's the logic that I would recommend as well, is to focus on the proportionality of the demand to the needed capacity. So whether that one-bedroom is $500 a month, or $5,000 a month, to me, I wouldn't make that the test. The test is that a one-bedroom unit has less demand for schools than a three-bedroom unit. And that's where I would focus to be safe, on potentially creating a strata of APFO requirements.
All right, thank you. Ms. Young?
Well, I thought I'd start by asking you all this question, if you realize that the PTA of Howard County voted on June 5th unanimously to not change the APFO regulations. I don't know if you were, are, were you, are you all familiar with that? Did you know that? No?
No.
Okay. Pardon me?
Sorry, like, no changes? They don't want it stronger, they don't want it weaker, they don't want it to address climate change?
Keep it like it is.
Okay. That's a choice.
Well, they were, that was regarding schools. Yeah, I don't think they were looking at anything other than schools. That's, yeah, the PTA generally focuses on that. And I have to say, I thought these two chapters, more than anything else, appeared as if they were written by developers. Because the entire focus is on, "How do we, how do we change APFO so that we can do things other than what we're doing right now? We can speed up development, we don't have to pay attention to whether or not our schools are overcrowded, we can pay for ways to mitigate the overcrowded schools." Now, I was curious what you all were thinking there. So that was in the school part. "Examine alternatives to APFO waiting periods where a development proposal offsets the potential impact to zoned schools through an additional voluntary mitigation payment." So my question is, what metrics would you use to determine the necessary mitigation payment to offset an impact to zoned schools? What could we possibly charge that would accurately reflect the cost of building new schools?
Well, I think that item was included in response to the many comments that the current APFO isn't holding development enough, isn't giving enough time, isn't allowing the infrastructure to catch up to the demand. So, another avenue to be explored, and I believe that's the language that's used, is either consider or explore alternatives. Another avenue that other jurisdictions around the country have used, despite Mr. Newscaster's comments that fee in lieu sometimes gets jurisdictions into trouble, is a similar fee in lieu, or a mitigation strategy, that in some jurisdictions, time is less of a concern than the funding to actually provide the seats to meet the demand. So in those jurisdictions, maybe they prioritize extracting, or requiring, or offering the option of developers to pay a fee, instead of waiting like they do here in Howard County.
So what you're saying is, you know this school is going to be overcrowded in three years, and the fact that they're waiting for three years isn't really going to help the school district. So if you could get them to pay, and say, "Well, what difference does it make?", then they could pay, and somehow give more money toward building a school, or making an addition. That was the thought. And that came from the school district?
I think it came from the Strategic Advisory Group.
Yeah, that came from the Strategic Advisory Group, which was a group of very-
I know who it was. We're very familiar, in fact, we, we got some people added onto that group, who we thought might be a little more thoughtful about what the schools might need, because it did seem very developer-heavy when it was first formed.
Are you, that's, are you thinking of the Planning Advisory Committee, or our Strategic Advisory Groups?
I think we're thinking of the strategic, yeah.
Strategic Advisory was James Cecil, Michael Behr, Larry Cohen, Joe Gallaghew, Ellen Flynn Giles, Elizabeth Holman, Steve Hunt, Pradima Lee, and Dr. Yun Liu. Oh, you're saying the focus group, the education focus group?
No, no, that's correct, Councilmember Rigby, that, what you-
Yeah, for school capacity and growth.
Okay, so it must have been the other group, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, that does concern me. If we would, this gets into exactly the situation that we were, that Mr. Newster was talking about, that, yeah, well, then they just pay, and we just have overcrowded schools.
Yeah, so the general-
I mean, that's what this, this chapter says for public schools, and for managing growth, just find another way to get rid of the APFO, or to get around it, so that we can increase the amount of development.
I think it's more, how can we use APFO in a way that's a bit more beneficial to all of us? So how do we, you know, is APFO appropriate for the development types that we're seeing in the future? Right? So how do we modify it in a way that meets all of our needs? I mean, how can all of this be a tool to start to, you know, solve some of our, our challenges that we're facing, as opposed to considering the way that we've always done things to be the way that we need to continue to do it in the future?
Well, let me ask this, because this is another question, or another piece of information that you have given us so far, that we've had these thousands of people who have come and talked about this plan. Did these thousands of people say, "Let's change the APFO rules so that we can let our schools become more overcrowded"? Did the residents say that?
Oh, I mean, we've heard, we've received more than 12,000 comments. I mean, for, I'm sure that there are some residents who have said, "Yes, we need to reevaluate APFO." I mean, members of our Strategic Advisory Group are residents of Howard County, and they're considered to be local experts. So, we've received feedback from a multitude of people.
Okay, so our residents are saying we should let, we should revise APFO and let our schools become overcrowded?
We have heard some residents say that. They have not said, "Let's let our schools come overcrowded," they've said, "Let's figure out how we can strike a balance. How can we continue to have a housing supply while ensuring that we have, we can meet our infrastructure needs?"
And is that the majority of residents that you've heard that from?
I would say I've heard it from a lot of residents.
I mean, we're going to have a year-long, detailed process on APFO.
Well, this is, these two chapters are about that, so that's why I'm focused.
And I don't even underst, and that's why I don't even understand why a lot of this is even in the general plan. I mean, the APFO group is going to debate all these issues, and we're going to go down all these different rabbit holes in a year and a half, or two years from now.
Well, okay, this is what I would say, Mr. Youngman, this is why I think it's, why it's at least problematic and of concern to me, because there are a lot of words in these two chapters.
I don't think the five of us are going to vote to make dramatic changes to APFO.
Well, so should we strike these sections of the general plan, is the question?
Right, I'm talking about the general plan, what, the words that are here in the general plan, that's why it's of concern to me.
I don't know-
Aren't these in here, because we started off talking about how, like, there need to be guide, like, guideposts for APFO, there needs to be a school chapter, I mean, this is in here.
No, they're talking about, I think, you're talking about the ones that say, "Maybe we should allow a fee in lieu," or something like that. And I just think that, it's just putting everything on the table.
Expanding it, yes, dramatically.
I know that, that Liz has to leave soon, and I would like us to get to-
Do you want to swap you and hers?
I would go to let her take my next spot.
Okay, let's do that. So Ms. Young can finish up on hers, and then we'll go to Ms. Walsh, and then we'll go to Mr. Young.
Okay, thank you both. I mean, I have the same concern with the mention of Gateway. This general plan presumes that that's where the next big development will be, but makes no specific recommendations in terms of what it looks like, or what the housing allocation would be. I mean, we've had this conversation before, it's a giant hole. I didn't ask this question, because I thought Chair Rigby was going to, and I thought that's where you're going, and then I thought that's where Mr. Newscaster was going. Instead of these so-called geographic regions, why are we not saying, "We need X number of 50-plus houses," or "We need X number of two-bedroom apartments," or "We need," I mean, why, why, I mean, hopefully you've gotten that, I think this notion of we're allocating it across the county in some definable way is fiction. But if we're, if we're not really bounding it by geographic region, why aren't we doing it by different type that we all know? That we need X number of three-bedroom houses that are a certain affordable, you know, ratio? Why can't we do that instead of this?
So, a lot of that, some of those recommendations would be found in the Housing Opportunities Master Plan, generally where they talk about what kinds of targets that we're hoping to achieve when it comes to the housing types, and more specifically, homes that are accessible and affordable. So, the general plan wouldn't get that specific, because I think a lot of that would have to be, to some extent, dictated by the market at the time that the development occurs. But the general plan doesn't get that specific as to what, you know, how many housing types, how many two-bedrooms, how many of all of these different types of units we should be building. It's just general guidance for how we want to grow, and where we want to grow, and what we want to conserve and preserve. So that's just, it's more specificity than what a general plan would get into.
Okay. So, then why wouldn't we use the Department of Planning and zoning geographic regions, right? I know there's this disconnect that we talk about every year, between what the school system uses as its planning regions, and, you know, what's proposed here, and that's how we're allocating housing units. Why wouldn't we be syncing up so-called geographic regions between our planning efforts and the schools' planning efforts? Like, isn't this the time that we would say, you know, Elk Ridge is a planning region, and this is how many housing units we're going to allow in Elk Ridge, and Western Howard County is a plan, like, what?
So, I think, I think the best way to think of the geographic regions for the housing allocation chart is that it is supposed to inform when we get into the comp rezoning process. Because you could have a zoning district across multiple different areas of the county, you know, the same zoning district could be in Elk Ridge, it could be in Laurel, it could be in the rural west. And then they, the criteria that's part of that zoning district dictates the density and the regulations that apply there. The allocation chart is supposed to help us also figure out how to do their rezoning, how to do the comp, to achieve the targets that we've set out for the housing units, which is why we have a larger number of housing units in, allocated to our activity centers, because we say, "These are the areas where we want to target our growth, this is where we want to see the most room amount of redevelopment," which means the how, the development form is going to have to, and that the regulations we write for those forms is going to have to be designed to achieve those goals. And then the housing forms, as well as the other, you know, commercial and office other development in terms for other zoning districts, their regulations are going to be written to achieve the lower allocations for the other character areas, as well as the rural west. So it's, so it's really, it's not tied to the planning areas of the county, as far as, like, this is the location of Elk Ridge, it's tied to informing the comp rezoning process, so that the comp rezoning process carries forward the implementation of the general plan, and the vision that's outlined in the general plan.
Okay. All right, I'm going to all dial in by phone and participate remotely. Thanks for letting me switch places.
Sure. Mr. Youngman?
Well, ironically, I was going to ask the same question, or a similar question. We talked about, I feel like, when we were running for office, and when we first got elected, like, why, why aren't we doing allocations? And I understand that this is, in some ways, a guideline for comp zoning, and for how to define these zoning districts, but some of it is allocations per whatever category you want to put them in. And we're putting them in non-geographic categories. It, it, it doesn't sync up with the school system at all, whether or not it, the housing allocations going in, what do we call it, you know, an activity center that is on this side of the county, or that side of the county, or north-south, whatever. So I think I had asked a year and a half ago, when we first started with this, I think Matt was, in the video, we were in CVG, like, why aren't we overlaying? Like, you can have this breakdown, except for downtown Columbia, maybe, you can have this breakdown within geographic regions, but why aren't we saying, "Okay, here's the six regions they use, we're going to plan within these six regions," and we can divide that up between activity centers, or green neighborhoods, however we want to do it, but within those regions? I think the answer was that the pushback was at the school system, and I don't want to put words in you guys' mouth, but if I recall, a year and a half ago, that, that was the problem, that they wanted the ability to stay nimble with their regions, or something. Jeff, do you remember any of this conversation?
Yeah, I remember that question. I think it was at a joint county council board of education meeting. And the point you're saying is very, it's been made a number of times, and in fact, that's how APFO first started. So the original APFO back in 1992, the APFO regions, or the allocation regions, were the same regions as the school, the elementary school districts. So that happened through the 90s, and then what happened was that during that time period, people realized, "Oh, the school system redistricts." So when they redistrict, the regions no longer lined up with the allocation areas. And so trying to wed that was, was complicated. And so that's when the county's 2000 general plan moved to the planning areas. And we follow the planning areas, because those are fixed, it didn't change over time, so they can be planned for over a 20-year plan, planning horizon. And in the meantime, the, the connection or the cooperation between DPZ and the school system was enhanced, so that we, we really know exactly, so our, our projections that we give the school system each year, annually, line up directly with their school planning polygons, which are really small areas. And there's 1,000-plus polygons. So, so in the projections, each year that's updated annually, as we have things coming, you know, new plans coming on board, rezonings occur, so it's, it's updated annually. We have a really good idea of near-term and long-term development that does align with the school districts, and it also provides flexibility. So if a decision is made to redistrict, you have that built in. So the allocations, just sort of historically over time, didn't really need to match like that in the past, and, because the purpose of the allocations related to that for school planning, it's, it's to plan for general county growth, police, fire, everything. So, so to put it back to the schools, it sort of makes it an isolated function. But that doesn't mean, though, that, that because they're a little bit different, we don't know where the growth is going to occur, because we do have that, that detailed land use planning function as well. So, I don't know if that helps, but that's-
It does.
And, and Mr. Youngman, kind of building on that, I also want to say, like, so the purpose of the allocation chart, and the land use that we're driving in the general plan, is for, over the next 20 years, this is where we want to see growth, and this is what we want that growth to look like.
And that's very different than saying, "The occupancy." So obviously, over a 20-year horizon, kids grow up. So you could have an entire region where young families move in, they stay there the entire time, we have all their kids running through the school system, and then they live for the next 40 years, and we don't have the yields coming out of that. So we don't want to tie our allocations to the occupancy of residential units, so much as we want to say, "This is our plan for how we want the county to grow, where we want to grow, what it should look like." And then the schools' tests for APFO is really designed to say, "So these are the allocations, they're spread out in these geographic areas, but the market is saying, 'This is the area that's really hot, they've exceeded their allocations, the schools closed, they can't move forward to building anymore here until that school district catches up, but there's still allocations available for these geographic areas, in these zoning districts, you can go build there, because there's existing capacity to accommodate that growth in that particular area, even if it's not here."
So you're looking at it as a, as this, as the allocation chart works in concert with APFO?
Yes, yeah.
The tough thing is, and you brought up the term redistrict- The, the tough thing is, and you brought up the term redistricting, right? Is because everything is just sort of, I don't want to say the wild west, but we're not, we're, we're looking at the county as the geographic area. You know, we can't really look at the polygons geographic areas because we move those around. You know, so, you, there's, there's not a sense of predictability for people that decide where to move. And that's, and that redistricting of kind of continuing to reset that playing field is the number-one region, reason why we're, we've got development versus residents versus schools and all these battles that get waged, which you will enjoy watching over the next few months on this. And it is also a lack of predictability. If, you know, I'm 70 and I'm sitting on four acres of property in Ellicott City, and I thought someday I'd be able to sell it and, you know, move into Erickson or Millers Grant or something, and now all of a sudden I can't. Because for whatever reason, I got redistricted, or I didn't get, I'm in a polygon where I got redistricted or didn't get redistricted. Or that was the hot area, and now we built to the max allocation, and now we're maxed out. Where, you know, it just creates this, it's not really planning for the long term. And, but I do see why the, you know, that as long as the school system wants to be able to redistrict in and out of those six fixed areas, we'd never be able to overlay. They'd have to stick, they'd have to say, we're only going to redistrict within those, within that one region. We're not going to jump from one region to another.
Yeah, it would be wonderful if we could plan, plan that way, where we could know what the future holds. What I mean is that, that the private, you know, the, the private market and, you know, plays, plays, plays a role. And the government sort of sets the guidelines and the regulations. But the nature of, of the free market is that it, to some extent, it is unpredictable. So, there could certainly be improvements to the way this is done, for sure. It's just a question of how to fit it in the framework of that. And everything you said, you know, sort of validates that, I think.
Because it is, you know, when it comes to the schools, I mean, you guys hear it all the time. People don't want portables, and they don't want to get redistricted. Well, I can't build brick and mortar and support that from a debt standpoint for every school to have the maximum amount of capacity that it could ever have, you know, as things ebb and flow. So, you're stuck with either portables, which we've learned in the last five years, aren't really all that portable. It's not like you move them around because they fall apart.
Oh, you gotta check out the new one we got.
You know, you either got to move the capacity or you got to move the kids. And neither, and, and it's like, everybody wants to live in this world where we're going to do neither, and we're just gonna, you know, operate at a 90% capacity and carry that extra, that extra debt. And I just don't think that's a world that is ever really sustainable. But, okay, you answered my question on planning, though.
I will say, I don't want to say what school my kids go to, but for my colleagues, if you want to come check out our, our fifth-grade den, it's actually really amazing. It's got all the classrooms in it, it's got bathrooms, and the fifth graders, they actually feel like very special because they have their own pod and.
But even that's not super portable.
No, it's not. It came from, it came from another school, it was reused.
Yeah.
So.
Talbot Springs used to have one of those.
Yes, it, it came from Talbot Springs.
Yeah. Yeah, fifth graders felt like they had their own little.
Yeah, no, it was, it's been, it's been really cool, I have to say. As a, as a parent, I did not have the best view of portables, but now having actually experienced them, it's really changed my perspective.
But again, realizing they're not really that portable, you know?
Right, well, that we have, but I think your, your, the questions are, how do you, how do you address it? Do you add temporary capacity, or do you temporarily move populations? And I don't think, I mean, I personally wouldn't want to be in a Montgomery County situation where they refuse to redistrict. They have 10,000 open seats and 10,000 overcrowded seats. I just, that's not a good use of resources. My question's really a bit more broader. If you all could talk about how, when it comes to managing growth, how pushing the, or guiding, guiding the growth to the activity centers reduces that pressure on the existing neighborhoods?
I mean, I, I think we all.
I mean, I think, well, but because we live in this space all the time. But for people in the community who don't, you know, spend hours reading planning documents, they might not understand why there's, why we're pushing, or why we're hoping for the growth to happen more at our activity centers and then sort of gently flow from there.
Right, and so, I mean, essentially, Howard County has developed, you know, over the last 50 years, greenfield. It's basically saying, we have this land, we're going to do low-density residential development throughout Howard County. There's the high market demand for that, and our regulations allow it. We're facing the reality as we did this plan of saying, there's no more land for that. That, that's just not a model of development that can, can go forward, it's not feasible. But we continue to have demand and growth pressure. So how do we accommodate that demand and growth pressure? Where does it make sense to go? And how does it need to look, given that we want to target it to areas that need to be redeveloped? And we want to target it to a very small amount of land? So, you're, when you're, when you're generally looking at the guidance in the general plan, you're saying, we're going to grow, this is how much we think we need to grow, this is where we want to grow, this is what it's going to end up having to look like. And we also know that it is more expensive, it is more complicated, it is more difficult to do development when it's a redevelopment. Because there's already existing infrastructure there you have to tie it into, and there's, you have to adapt to the surrounding area. There's neighbors who very much care what's happening right there. And so, you end up instead having to evaluate AFFO. And the process, a lot of times you start looking at the process. Because developers will say, I can go develop this remaining bit of land that we have pretty easily and get my return on investment, and I'm good to go. Or I can bang my head against the wall through this very complicated process that, when I'm already doing a very complicated development. And, and they, obviously their incentives are, they're very clear to them. And so, when we look at the, when we talked about the AFFO and looking at the process and saying, hey, we would like the AFFO task force to look at this growth management tool and see, does it need to be retooled? We want to say, how can we retool it to make those incentives make sense for developers, to make sense, market sense, and still make sure that we're not getting ourselves in trouble? That we're not getting into a situation we haven't accounted for the impact of that redevelopment? So it's got to, we want them to do all of that. And it's a hard task for them to do. But process very much can affect the market. And if we want to incentivize not developing that remaining little bit of land, as well as achieving all of our environmental and preservation goals, we have to look at our process for, for how it interacts with the market.
I appreciate that, because our current process incentivizes single-family detached housing. That's what it incentivizes, people to build. And more children come out of single-family detached homes, which go to the school overcrowding. So I think, I totally agree, we fundamentally need to change our processes so that way we're achieving different outcomes. And I, and I appreciate the dedication that you guys took in evaluating this. And I'm almost loath to bring this back up since we've moved off Housing Allocation Chart, but it does say on 1D that they, that the goal is to evaluate the necessity of a housing allocation chart, including its goals, design, and appropriate place in the law. So, I just wanted to say that I am looking forward to that evaluation. Ms. Young?
I'm also curious if you heard from thousands of residents that they wanted to live in apartment houses built in parking lots.
So, I mean, I, again, I think that what we've heard has sort of.
I mean, these are the two things I see in these two chapters. 9,000 units of apartment houses built in parking lots, and get rid of the AFFO.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly have heard from, say, in certain community meetings where people have come up to me and said, oh, wow, I really like these mixed-use activity center concepts, I'd love to be able to live here or walk to the amenities that are within these locations. So, I think it just, it's, yeah, I have heard that there's been a desire and interest for a greater number of amenities that are within walking distance.
Amenities, as opposed to having the, the apartment house built in the parking lot.
I think that everyone understands that for a redevelopment to be feasible, it's, there needs to be a mix of uses. So it would have to be redeveloped in a way that you could have more residential that supports the retail and the other kind of commercial opportunities that are within that redevelopment.
Now, I, I want to make an observation because I think that this is an unfair, an unfair statement that you're using as a comparison because you say in this general plan that there are only 41 students coming from the Howard Hughes Development in downtown Columbia. And I would say that that is a very unique development in that, as you know, it is mostly one-bedrooms in studio apartments, and the rents start at $2,500 a month, going up to $4,500 a month. So I think if you're at the point where you can afford an apartment that's big enough to actually put a kid in it, you're probably going to live in a single-family attached or detached house. Or, or even a two-bedroom apartment somewhere else. So comparing one of the downtown Columbia apartments to what we could expect in terms of what we might want to look at to change AFFO, and I'm getting back to that again, is not a fair comparison. I think if you are looking at where, oh, we can just change apartment, we can just change AFFO because, look, Howard Hughes only has 41 students coming out of its apartments. No, that's not a fair comparison. We have to look at how many people are moving to apartments in Howard County just because they want their kids to come to our schools. There are plenty of people who are doing that. And if in the future, the only way that they will be able to move to Howard County to put their kids in schools is by living in an apartment, which may actually end up incentivizing buildings, builders, to put in more two- and three-bedroom apartments because they know they'll be able to rent them, because the kids will be able to go to school in Howard County, then we shouldn't be changing AFFO for apartments. That's the last thing we should be doing. We should be looking very hard at that. So, I, I think to just assume in these chapters that, well, just because they're apartments, that means that we can change the, the AFFO to specifically provide to them is short-sighted.
So I think that's, that's one of the reasons that, you know, we're, we're basing that on the yields that we see right now based on the data that we've been collecting. But we've also asked the AFFO task force to look at communities that are a little bit further along in this kind of redevelopment context and say, what were your yields?
What AFFO task force?
The AFFO task force committee that's going to be formed.
We put that AFFO task force together, don't we?
I believe it's done by executive order.
Oh, I thought it was, we put it together, the council.
The code requires it to be stood up, and the previous one was done by executive order.
So it doesn't state how it actually gets stood up?
I'm not, I think that's a Mr. Cook question. But I would also, Mr. Brownow, you, you went and found every, where every student in Howard County is coming from. You went and found where every student in Howard County is coming from, the type?
We went and found that? Is that your?
Yes. Well, you, in the fiscal analysis and methodologies, you walk through how many students are coming from apartments, how many students are coming from single-family attached, and how many.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes, but as I pointed out, that's past practice. And if all we're going to build, build in the future is apartment houses, and that's the only way for a family to bring their student or students into Howard County, they will move into these apartments. It could very well be a different future. And I think if we're going to change AFFO at all, we should, at, at the very least, give it four or five years if this plan is adopted and these buildings start coming up, to see what the future brings before we make changes to AFFO. That's just my view.
I mean, we have to do the committee within the year, but I guess if the committee recommended zero changes, I would, I don't know. I, I think that there's at least consensus that AFFO isn't working. I don't think there's a consensus on how to make it work yet, but, like, to me, just changing the time is dysfunctional. And I think we could do so much better and actually solve some of our workforce housing problems. And, you know, it is certainly possible for us to put out policy goals that say, that direct one-bedroom units over two- and three-bedroom units.
Was it David who just asked that? Didn't you just ask that, David? About, or was it Liz who said, why can't we do one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms?
Well, I think she asked it, but I think the obvious answer is, I don't think that we can prescribe. It's like saying, you're going to build single-family detached, but they have to be three-bedrooms or six-bedrooms, or, I mean, at some point, I, I would say it's government overreach to tell them what they have to build.
I think you, it's, it's less of that, it's more if you're meeting X, Y, and Z, then you fit under this criteria. So if you're an activity center and you're 75% one-bedrooms, then you can go to this shoot. I mean, you'd have to model it and see, you know, where those things are, but I think that there is a way to do it. I just think we have to dedicate ourselves creatively to solving challenges.
Like if the person, like if, if the private sector that's building the apartment building says, balancing market demand versus waiting in the AFFO bin versus, you know what? I don't want to wait, even though there's a market for two- and three-bedrooms, I want to get it done now. So I'm going to go ahead and build one-bedroom apartments, then maybe there's some different shoot for them. I, I had, I missed, I missed her saying that.
Yeah, but I mean, but again, I think that's all for the residents that are on the AFFO committee to really dig into and weigh up, and then we would evaluate sort of the final problem.
Well, you mentioned that you had already talked to the AFFO task force? You said that we would, what, what was your?
No, so, so the process that after the general plan is adopted, within one year, my understanding is that Howard County requires an AFFO task force.
Right, I understand that, yes.
And then what they do is they take the general plan goals, and they say, how do these general plan goals relate to the AFFO? What changes do we need to make for AFFO to back, to be able to implement the general plan goals that are outlined? So it's, you know, first the general plan, then they'd say, let's evaluate to see, does this need to be changed in order to achieve these goals? So it's, it's more our recommendation and the policy in the general plan is saying, given what we understand about how we're going to grow moving forward, where we would like to grow, and sort of how tool, growth management tools like AFFO impact development decisions, do we need to make any changes to that process? And so that's for the task force to discuss and develop recommendations for. And then that will also inform all the other planning that happens afterwards for how we do regulations and comp zoning.
Okay, specific example. You've got the, I keep calling it the milk producers, I don't know what the actual name of that.
I believe it is Wellington Farms.
Yeah, so I was going to say, it's got a name now.
Wellington Farms, it's not Wellington Overlook Farms? Okay. Okay, yes, okay, Wellington Farms. We've got Wellington Farms. That was, okay, that land was bought from the milk producers. It was, it was rezoned. And now there are, I believe, 398 single-family detached homes going on to it.
Not yet, and they're phased.
Not, not single-family detached.
No, and there's a mix of towns.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, detached, it's not detached.
It's not fully detached, there are some detached and some attached.
Okay, so it's both?
Yeah.
All right.
But there, because there are 12, I'm digging in deep in my brain. It's our 12 zoning, but it had an optional MXD overlay. But that market demand, instead of going through the zoning board process because they wanted to go through it quickly, they decided to sell and have it be developed under the underlying land use versus going through the zoning process and achieving probably a higher profit, but taking more time.
So, you get, you, you hear that this development has, is going to be taking place, and do you, at what point do you start planning for extra school capacity? Mr. Brownow says to you, oh, by the way, guess what's coming up? And guess how many, how many units there's going to be? And then the school district says, oh, single-family, attached, and detached, that could be, with 398 units, that could be, oh, another 500 elementary school kids, or whatever the number is.
Yeah, it wouldn't be anywhere near 500, but we, we get the housing projection from Mr. Brownow indicating the number of units expected of each type for each of the future 10 years. We plug that into our projection methodology, which assigns, uses historic student yield rates for different types of housing.
rates for different types of housing by school district. So the schools that serve that boundary would have, serve that neighborhood would have their own historically-based student yield rates. We do the math within our, our, our model and arrive at an enrollment projection for that school. And then that enrollment projection feeds into the capital planning process, which goes on for the next year, um, informing decisions about when, when and where to build additional school capacity or place relocatables.
Just out of curiosity, is that school Gorman Crossing? Do you know?
Uh, no, it's Hammond.
It's Hammond?
Yeah.
Elementary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I, I mean, it takes you years to be able to, I would think, catch up physically with what you know mentally about this, this, um, development coming down the pike.
It does take time, once the need is identified, to, uh, get the, uh, planning for it into an approved capital budget, secure matching funding from the state, uh, do all the, the machinations that go into developing a long-range master plan, and then fund and, and build that project, whether it's an addition or a new school.
Okay, well, I think you all know where I, what I feel about AFO and where I'm going with this one. But, uh, I, I do have one other observation I wanted to make because this looks like it came from you guys, and I thought it was an excellent one. And I'm hoping that, um, we can really act upon it and do something more than what we've done in the past, which was, um, to, uh, let's see, it was, there was, evaluate a trust fund for school site acquisition or partnerships with philanthropic organizations to purchase property and hold it for short-term. Then there were some other ideas on, and I think these probably came from, from DPC because I know that we've looked at this, which was, um, evaluate the applicability of the code provisions governing reservations of land for public facilities to determine appropriate changes that would increase utilization. And then there was one more about consider right-of-first refusal strategy to purchase properties proposed for sale in certain priority geographies. And, uh, well, all of this is about land, getting that land upfront as soon as possible. Uh, Mr. Lubley, for those of you who could not see him, was making a sign that just said, if you could only give us the money. Okay. And if we only could, I would, okay? So, I, I mean, that, I, to me, would be such a huge step forward. And, um, we did explore, myself and Ms. Rigby, um, explored with Ms. Gallen when, um, she was the department director, the possibility of strengthening our land reservation, um, uh, regulations. And we didn't get very far, but if you think we can get further, trust me, we will certainly, I know Ms. Rigby and I are still interested in it, and we would certainly pursue anything we could to ensure that we would have that, whether it's right-of-first refusal, or you have to reserve this land if you're gonna build this size of a development, or you get to build two thousand apartments, um, then you have to also set aside land for schools. I, I mean, there are, I wish that we had more tools in that toolbox. And right now, the only tool I see is AFO. That's it. Or money. Thank you, Mr. Lubley, for reminding me of that, yes. That's the other possibility. But those are the only, I mean, does any, do you all see any other tools here?
Well, I mean, I, I do think that, um, this particular public school facilities chapter offers a lot of different options and tools to consider moving forward in the future, uh, many of which you had just mentioned, including that as we bring these activity centers online, to ensure that we consider the educational facility needs as a part of that process.
Which, right now, we don't have that in our zoning code. So I am happy in comprehensive rezoning to be the sponsor of that particular zoning code regulation amendment. Yes, to consider schools when we are actually considering redevelopment.
Noted.
Okay. Please come to me for that.
Mr. Youngman?
We'll take under advisement. Um, just to respond to two quick things, as I think we're gonna end up finishing up. Second, a little bit to what Deb said earlier, which is, and, and I remember talking to Mr. Brownow, like, early on about, you know, how do you project apartments? Because you don't know what the mix is gonna be. And past experience is not a guide. Twenty years ago, you didn't get kids from apartments. Now, it is much different. You know, I had a family member living in the Turf Valley Apartments. They're packed full of kids. Yeah, packed full of kids. But there's more kids than you would've seen twenty years ago. Plus, apartments come faster. The kids come faster. If it's a single-family detached community, you know, you're selling the houses gradually, they're getting built gradually, they're getting delivered, delivered gradually, so you kinda see it coming and the school's gonna adjust. But what we saw with, like, the Wexley, is all of a sudden, one day, you know, fifty kids show up at Beller Springs. It's like, where the hell these kids come from? All because those apartments can lease up quickly. And it's, it's not just the size, it is the price point. Yes, downtown Columbia, it's working sort of like it was designed to work. Small units, expensive, we're knocking the kids. But you build an apartment building like the Wexley, where you can rent a two- or three-bedroom apartment for somewhere in the low-to-mid-two-thousands, or whatever those numbers might be, you're gonna get a bunch of kids. We absolutely, one, can't assume that apartments are gonna generate yields like downtown Columbia. And two, we gotta figure out some way, somewhere, even if it were just taking the most recent few built outside of downtown Columbia to get the fiscal analysis right. And then, or you said something about, or somebody from DPC said something about, you know, growth pressure. I reject this notion that just 'cause everybody wants to live here, we need to find them a place to live, or we need to build them a place to live. This whole exercise, we've talked a lot today of how to make it work and how to pay for it and where to build the stuff, but at the end of the day, the general plan process isn't about that. It's about, what do we want this place to look like in thirty years? And we can build apartments and high-density housing till we're blue in the face, and yeah, I can guarantee you, we'll be able to sell them, 'cause we're right here in the middle of this job market. But, you know, you've got three-hundred-and-thirty-some existing residents here now, third thousand, uh, existing residents now, that might not want their neighborhood to go from looking the way it does to, here's, here's where the infrastructure is, so it's the smart place to put development. Everybody would agree, if you had to create it, that's where you'd put it. But you don't have to create it. The county is sustainable-growing slow, sustainable-growing fast. The fiscal stuff get, we'll figure out. But I just, I think that's an important thing as we're going down this road, that we get so mired in the detail, we forget that the big consideration is, like, what do we want Howard County to look like in twenty fifty or twenty sixty? I'm sorry for all that, 'cause I do have a question. So a lot of these recommendations were things that the school system should do, or that we can do in partnership with them. Like, has the Board of Ed or, or anyone outside of these guys in their department, you know, read that and said, hey, these are great ideas, we're gonna adopt these ideas? Or are we just sort of kinda shouting at the rain, so to speak?
So the Board of, the Board of Education and the Superintendent has been made aware of the Hoco by Design process and specifically these chapters. I have not specifically sat down and had a meeting with them, so I can't say a hundred percent that they have been read word-for-word, but they have been provided and they are aware of them.
I think part of this process that, at least, I think we're gonna wanna see, is that, because a lot of this is driven off of infrastructure, which is, for the most part, school capacity, sorry, art, and Chris and everybody dealing with the other infrastructure. But with everybody focused on schools and some really good, I think, worthy of consideration, you know, ways to be smarter about land and smarter about cost and smarter about how to build capacity, that we have by the end of voting on this plan, at least some level of buy-in by the Board of Ed. 'Cause otherwise, all we've done is said, well, we're gonna do all this stuff to build schools, and they might say, we're not gonna do any of that. So, fire away.
Yeah, and I just wanna, um, kinda just point and make two, two points based on some of the things you just said, Mr. Youngman. So just one other piece, I just wanna make sure it was heard, that will be a part of the AFO Committee. Um, the AFO Committee's work will be looking at, um, student generation by housing type. So we, you know, do have a MOU with the school system to dig a little bit deeper into some of their data where they can, you know, where we can see what the student, student generation rate is by housing type, you know, which I think we would make a, make a distinction between studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedrooms versus resales, et cetera. So all of that, I, will be data that will be discussed, um, with the AFO Committee. The second part I wanna speak to is the housing supply. You know, why are we trying to increase housing supply? Who are we trying to increase housing for? And my question in response to that is, how many young adults, young professionals, do we know? How many of them can afford to live here? How many members of our workforce can afford to live here? So the idea behind?
I can bear you for it to live here.
So the idea behind trying to increase, you know, continue to have a healthy housing supply, um, is so that, and encourage more of these diverse housing types that we hope will be smaller in nature, which might create more affordable opportunities for all, for everyone, for all of us, is, you know, so that's sort of what's, what's behind this plan. It's somehow trying to increase the housing supply so there's just, overall, more housing stock and more supply that's generally more affordable to our kids who are graduating, graduating from high school, when they get in, just start the job market, they're still living in your parents' basement, in their parents' basement, um, or for our, you know, older adults who might be looking to transition out of their current homes into something that might be just smaller and more manageable.
I think that's a great answer, because both of those constituencies are serving in some way directly or indirectly the people that live here now. But there's also a huge component of why we build new houses, is 'cause somebody will buy them and move here from somewhere else, or choose to live here instead of Marundale County, or Bee Gees County, or Baltimore County. And I just, I, I, an overriding thing for me has always been, just because somebody wants to live here and there's not an available house for them at their budget, where they want, how much space they need, within this distance of a sidewalk, in this distance of a park, and with an under-crowded school, like, so what? You know? It, it exists somewhere. You know, it's not the taxpayers of Howard County's obligation to accommodate the entire sort of world of who wants to live here. Now, I, again, I understand, I want my kids to be able to live here, we want teachers to be able to live here, want our seniors to not get displaced. But at some point, as you all noted, we're running out of space. And I don't, I don't know, I, I know, speaking for myself, I don't wanna wake up in, you know, thirty years and basically all of Howard County looks the same, except for where we just put towers to accommodate people, because we didn't have the ground, and we felt all this pressure to accommodate thirty thousand more households. So, you know, it's, it, that's gonna be a bigger conversation. It's not really about managing growth, it's about growth itself. But I just think that to sort of, as a theme going forward, at least for me, you know, it's, I get it's a worthy goal, but at some point, at what cost? So.
I just wanted to add one more follow-on based on that.
I know you can't afford to live here, though. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I actually, I am lucky enough, I can afford to live here.
Good.
But I don't know if my kids will be able to.
Right.
But I, I think one thing I also wanna point out, it's not just accommodating people who want to live here, it's also making sure that we have the right job and housing balance. And it's the type of jobs. Because you live here right now, you wanna go down the street and you wanna go to this particular commercial or retail entity, they can't afford to hire anyone, 'cause no one can live here at the price points that they can afford to pay anyone, and they don't wanna commute in.
Right.
Or if they do commute in, now we're spending all of our money to accommodate the transportation infrastructure that we don't necessarily want to, to, for all those cars that are on the road, for the people who have to commute in because they can't afford to live here. So it's, it's not just accommodating people who wanna live here, it's making sure that we have a really good and, um, and sort of best practices in our housing and our, and our, um, job balance, the type of jobs that we wanna have. Because otherwise, what we're gonna see is those commercial entities, those office entities, those, those employers locating somewhere else, because they don't wanna be here either. And then we start a, a cycle of decline for the county.
Well, what, what we're gonna, I think, need to see and have a conversation is during this is, you know, because every movement, every sort of advocacy, you know, group, kind of, you know, you find that right angle. And I can tell you that the day they stopped calling, you know, low-income housing or subsidized, affordable housing and workforce housing was when you sort of married some groups, and that's what really got some juice. But after being on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce and being around small businesses and talking to EDA a lot, I asked the question point-blank. Is, is the problem with hiring, or are you having trouble getting a company to locate here, or stay here, or grow here, because people can't afford to live here? Consistently, I hear no. So we're gonna have to hear from the business community, not the development business community or the ones that make money building it, but the folks that say, I had to move my business from Howard County, or I couldn't move my business here, because I couldn't get anybody to work for me, 'cause they didn't have a place to live, and they didn't have a car or whatever. Like, there's, you're gonna have to link that up. 'Cause that's, I've been hearing that for years. But I keep asking the question, and the, the answer I get from the actual business owners and the people that represent business owners, don't, don't back that up. So.
All right, we'll bring Mr. Youngman the data. That's what I'm hearing.
And the people. Anybody can create data. I can create the data.
Well, I meant, sorry, when I say data, I mean truthful data, not misinformation, not what we believe, not what we think, but what is real, what is measurable. You know, we can look at the hospital and say, put your employees into different vans.
Right.
Which number of your, like, tell us how many of your employees earning X amount live, where do they live? Where do they live? Because the hospital and the community college have both communicated to me that, who are two of our largest employers, that for the lower-income positions, janitorial staff, things like that, they do have a really hard time. And I have other employers in my district who, um, because, no, because they pay lower wages, they actually hire a van company.
Right.
And they utilize the van company to go to more affordable areas where their employees live, and they utilize, they pay van services to bring people in to our county, and they're located there because of the proximity to the biodigester and to, um, the food authority and to one-seventy-five and ninety-five. That's why they're there, but they've had to create all these other scaffolding supports to be able to get the workforce in. So, I mean, I can certainly, I agree, and I'm looking forward to it. I'm just saying that, you know?
And I've heard the same thing. I know that's how the mall gets their, um, sort of, I don't wanna say janitorial, but the, the staff that works the food court or whatever, they, they pick 'em up. I know the hospital's picking people up. But is that a transportation issue versus a housing issue? You know, 'cause their kids are going to school somewhere else, and that's certainly saving us money.
Or they don't have kids.
Or they don't have kids.
And we're missing out on them.
You know, so again, it's, it's this, I don't want this to be a simplistic, we have unmet demand of people that wanna live here, therefore, we build it. God, I just, I think we need to be a little bit more purposeful and thoughtful than that. And I know that you are and I am, but, you know, it's gotta be more than just that as the justification.
I think we're, I'll shelve my other question and keep going down this road, because, I mean, I think that there are very real consequences to if we put a glass case over our community, pretend we're the villages in Florida, and change nothing, build nothing, do nothing. Because?
I don't think that anybody would propose that extreme.
Uh, that was like, no, A.
Well, I.
That was scenario A.
There are certainly. There are certainly people who believe, "The door was open, I'm the last one in, I got mine, lock it behind me." And I don't think that that's a balanced policy either.
No, but there are certainly many, there, I don't think there's many people, ooh, but I think there's loud people who advocate for that.
There are.
And, and I think that what happens in that, and what we've seen, because we've seen our building permits decline, at the same time that our, it puts pressure on our assessments. Is that correct? When we don't build, does that put pressure on our tax, on our assessments?
Sure.
For our residents?
Sure, a community that, that goes to zero growth, like a Connecticut or something like that.
I mean, even in what we don't-
Government never shrinks.
How we ratcheted down.
I mean, that's part of the, part of the supply-demand thing, right? So, if you don't have the supply, but you have strong demand, then prices go up. So, it does impact affordability.
Right, and then that'll push out. I mean, I think it's really great that, I mean, Ms. Young, what year did you buy your home?
Uh, 1988.
Mr. Youngman?
1988.
1999, and we're making hand over fist off of me right now. My kids-
Probably not as much as they're making on me.
Probably not. But that's, and that's the whole thing, too, with the whole new construction versus not new constru- Every housing unit, except a studio maybe, is going to have a student yield.
No.
It's just, when does it come, you know?
They do not. They do not have student yields, especially if we're looking at one-bedroom units.
I said, except for, I said studio.
You said studios.
I said one-bedroom. But like, if you build a townhouse, and you call it new construction, yeah, there's going to be X number of kids that are going to come out of that. Well, you know, I mean, somebody might have a kid, and then they're there for a while, then they move, and they sell to somebody that doesn't. I mean-
What if you have a quad that has four one-bedrooms?
It's over the, I'm just-
That's what I want.
I know, but never mind. We're going to go down the road of advocating for different housing types, which I don't think we want to do.
No, but I think, I think we, I, I do, and I think it's important to have the different housing types discussion as part of managing growth, because that's part of managing our growth.
I think it's, would be great, if we can figure out a way to, you know, with the apartment thing of, you know, what, what kind of apartment rooms are you going to build?
Right, and so we're, those are all great points, and we're going to look into this, as Mary had mentioned. And this is so, a very important thing, this yield, so it's actually included in the plan. So, if you look on page PS16, which is the Public Schools chapter, it has the yields by unit type.
But those yields are based on past performance.
Right, and so your point, your, your point is well-taken. If, your, your point is if, if the future's going to be mostly apartments and less single-family homes, people still want to come here for the school system, then that would put pressure on, on more families living in these homes.
But if you built one bedrooms, then that would reduce that pressure, and you could balance it.
But you just said that we can't say, we're only going to build one bedrooms, so we can't do that.
But you can put, turn knobs and levers within the AppFO policy to incentivize the one-bedroom unit creation.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I'm saying. If there's a consensus that we want to have ownership opportunities for one-bedroom-type apartments, then we need to figure out-
As in condos.
As in condos.
Yes.
Yes, I mean, I just, yeah, condos.
Condos, right.
I don't hate apartments. I've lived in apartments. I don't look down on people who live in apartments. I welcome people in apartments in our community. I socialize with my friends in apartments. If you, if we want to incentivize one-bedroom unit condos with ownership opportunities, then we need to be mindful that we're starting sort of these beacons of how to get there in the general plan. We need to say, if that's an incentive, we should put that in there. And then, when it comes to AppFO Committee, they can evaluate, how do they do that? Where, where are the knobs? Where are the levers?
Well, that would be up to us, then we would need to take some of these allocations that they've already put in here, some of these units that have already been put in here, because I certainly wouldn't want to put in more than, and say, some portion of these have to be homeownership. They have to be condominiums. They have to be, those are the incentives. As opposed to just saying, 9,000 in activity centers.
I mean, I'm saying, when we go in here, we just say, create incentives for condo ownership opportunities.
I think it, there's not a word, that, there is not one single word that says that in this general plan. Not a word.
Okay, I feel like I've read the word, but I'll defer to the experts. And I will, I swear, there's something near it, because I've been looking, and I was like, that's an umbrella I could, we could get under.
If you could point us to that, I would be thrilled, because I've been looking for it, because that's what I've been saying all along. We need to find ways that are pathways to homeownership for low-income and moderate-income people. And none of this is that.
Well, generally, missing middle, I think, is an ownership model. So, when you look at-
Well, if you consider condos missing middle, then I would agree with you.
Yeah.
Well, then, we're on the-
Four-unit quads, six-unit quads, or larger, I mean, larger buildings, sure.
Those aren't necessarily condos. Those can just be rentals. I'm talking about actual homeownership.
So, I'm saying that if we put the goal to incentivize ownership opportunities into managing growth, then I think we, that is something that could come out of the AppFO Committee.
I will say this. I have talked to a number of developers about this missing middle, and I don't think they're going to be incentivized to build it.
No, the current, the current developers want to do what they did in 1992.
They want to build apartment buildings.
They want to, I don't, I think they want to build single-family detached, and they accept that they have to build apartment buildings, and they're disappointed by that. I think we're going to need-
Want to build apartment buildings, just like this plan, yes.
We're going to need to create more local people. Like, homeowners should be able, and free, and be given choice, and opportunity, and incentive to utilize their home, their property, the way that works for them. So, if there is a senior who wants to take their home and transform it into a duplex, and then sell the lower duplex to their child, we should be incentivizing them to do that. You know, and I think that we can put those into the managing growth policies, into, because if we want the AppFO Committee to be looking at incentivizing homeownership opportunities, then we should ask them to do that.
I agree. I would like them, I would-
All right, we've got agreement.
Would like to see those words in the general plan somewhere.
Dynamic Neighborhoods Policies 5 and 6.
Okay, and that incentivizes homeownership?
It incentivizes both the development of affordable, affordable homeownership and rental opportunities. It includes both, and a variety of actions, which we're going to talk about when we get to Dynamic Neighborhoods. What are all the different actions that could incentivize homeownership? What are the actions that could incentivize affordable rental opportunities? So, we'll cover them both. And I'll, and I'll do my best to not group them together, and make a little bit clearer distinction between what could be a homeownership opportunity versus what could be, what might not be a homeownership opportunity.
Okay, can, can I just have a couple more questions?
Yeah, because I think that was like a squishy David, a squishy me, and now I think we're at you, so let's go to affirm you. And then we'll-
I just, I, I wanted to ask the school district, I think this was your comment in the Schools section, that you were looking for variances to build schools, and simple, or, or something about, and, and just to be able to get these variances through administrative approval? I wasn't sure if that was a DPZ comment, or if that was a school district comment. I thought that's how variances already occurred, and I wanted to make sure that the variances were discussed in terms of bulk regulations, which is height, and setbacks, et cetera. And I wanted to make sure that the variances that the school district was seeking didn't have to do with putting things on steep slopes, cutting down entire forests, filling in wetlands, or any of the environmental considerations that some of us might have.
No, correct. It was not towards that. So, during the advisory group, the discussion was talking about, it led towards this through the discussion of limited land, and how there's been a lot of discussion with going up with buildings. And Guilford Park was used as an example, that's already a three-story facility. However, we had to come and seek variances on that facility based off of the zoning laws because of height restrictions and setbacks. So, that's where that discussion came in. It was not towards reforestation or anything like that. It was just more of the discussion towards different possibilities and the current zoning that's currently there.
Okay, Guilford Park was a field, wasn't it? Was it a field?
Correct, but within the zone that it's in, it has a height limitations. And even though with the three-story, with the entrance stairwell, it went above that height, so we had to come looking for variances.
Okay, and did you have trouble getting those variances?
I don't specifically recall trouble.
Well, you wouldn't probably have been, I don't know, would you have been involved with that? Scott would have been involved with that.
I, I was involved in one way or another, yes. I don't specifically having a, a difficult time with variances, but just as a reference, it was a point where we came back.
Just for future, that if we're going to be able to keep moving and building schools as quickly as possible, if we keep adding kids, that we need to be thinking about this?
Correct, especially with the limitation of land, and there was, in the presentation, showing the ideal land site. And a lot of that land is not necessarily the building, but it is the programs that are needed. There was the opportunity for potentially joint use of fields. But when we're looking at the lands, and we're looking at some of the regulations that are on the properties, that's where that discussion came about.
Okay. Activity centers back there, because you know how much I love talking about them. Would, do you envision that these activity centers would be subject to zoning regu- regulations, like the village centers? I mean, right now, these activity centers are planned for parking lots like Normandy, and Chatham Mall, and the, you know, places, Long Gate Village Center. So, those aren't village centers that I think were covered by what we looked at previously when we were debating the Hickory Ridge Village Center redevelopment. But is that what you all envision with these activity centers?
So, I would say for the activity centers, if you look at our Dynamic Neighborhoods chapter, you know, we have so many different kinds, and they, and if you dig into that, you can kind of see what's envisioned there. And when we get into compres zoning and regulations, I wouldn't want us to restrict the ability to achieve all the goals that are in the general plan for these activity centers.
But that's okay. We just have different views.
No, no, in terms of the goals of, we want more open space. We want to make sure we're connecting by competitive. We want to make sure that we're achieving a mix of housing types, including not just apartments. So, we wouldn't want to say, we're not going to redevelop, because for some of those, it might make sense to redevelop sections of what's already there. Some of them, it's more of an infill on existing parking lots. Sometimes you need to adjust the infrastructure to make it work. And then we also need to look at the process for evaluating and improving those, so-
That's what I'm asking about, is, do you, do you anticipate that there will be a process for evaluating those that are, that will entail zoning regulations that are specifically aligned to go through this process for these activity centers? Whether it's this type, or that type, or whatever type, I mean-
It's going to depend on the activity center. It's going to depend on the zoning. It's going to depend on how much we want to alter existing regulations for some of the zon- So, like, for instance, the village centers, they're under the new town zoning, and they currently have a process for evaluating major and minor redevelopment of the village centers. So, when we get into compres zoning, the regulations, we're going to evaluate how much of that do we want to tweak to make sure we're achieving the goals that we want to, versus how much do we need to keep the process as it is? And then for some of our activity centers where we're seeing a lot more transformation, or we're seeing a new, or maybe the creation of a new zoning district, we're really going to be starting those processes and diversions from start.
Well, I gave you the examples. Normandy, Chatham, and whatever the third one is on Route 40. Because those have never been thought of as activity centers before.
Right.
So, what, what do you, I mean, we're not that far away from that, so what are, what are you guys envisioning?
Mary, if, if I could, the Route 40 activity centers were contemplated as mixed-use centers in the last general plan and Plan Howard 2030. And so, there's a traditional neighborhood center overlay that applies to them. And there were recommendations in the Development Regulations Assessment to look at that for mixed-use zoning as part of the zoning code update.
So, that one's already in there. What about Long Gate?
That's something that came out of our process for this general plan.
So, that would be a brand-new idea.
And I just wanted to add that there is information in the Character Areas Appendix, which speaks to those different types of activity centers. So, there is additional guidance for what the zoning code update would look, would look at for those different locations, for those different character area types.
And, and there are recommendations, then, in this appendix as well, as to how to, like a how-to book, or what?
So, it's also in the Quality by Design chapter that we're going to look at, two work sessions from now. Talks a lot about context-sensitive design. It refers to the Character Areas Appendix. So, they're meant to be looked at in combination, as well as, you know, the Dynamic Neighborhoods chapter that was mentioned. So, the comprehensive rezoning will look at, you know, all of the zoning-related guidance that's in the general plan.
And it also incorporates, you know, what we really want is we want our regulations, and our guidelines, and our pattern books, and everything that we create, to already shape what gets built there. So, we want, you know, if you're a developer or a landowner, you can look at the regs that are on the book, and you can know, if I build this, I'm meeting everything you told me that you want, and then it's going to be approved.
So, you're saying that it wouldn't, it wouldn't go through the zoning board like the village centers?
I don't think that's been determined necessarily yet, because you have to decide what elements need to get more scrutiny or not. But in general, for, for when you're developing a general plan, and then going into compres zoning and regulations, you want the paper to be written such that anyone can see exactly what is being asked of them, and that this is what we're going to develop, and this is what it should look like. So, that's part of our goal, of making things more predictable, so that it's, it's very clear, this is what you should build.
Or it could be very clear that you have to go through the zoning board, because this is, you can build this, you can build it within this, these parameters, I guess. Or you're hoping not to have parameters anymore.
No, I thought they were just saying that, what the parameters were. They were going to have explicit parameters. That's what the books are.
Yes, so it's just-
Right, well, that's, that's what I, I'm, that's what I'm saying, that the parameters-
That's what they're saying, too.
The village center right now, village center redevelopments are, okay, that's, that's parameters, right? So, those are parameters. It has to be, it's supposed to be this way, and that way, and this way. But then, then there's subjective judgments as well within those village center redevelopment regs. So, the question is, are you, well, never mind. It's too far away, and we can talk about it later. But I am very concerned that some of these larger activity centers could just go straight through without any review ever by the zoning board.
Well, the whole, remember, the whole compres zoning will have to be approved by County Council. And within that compres zoning, these different types of character area, the zoning for these character areas will be outlined, so it will be before council. And then, once we get into the character areas, the Quality by Design chapter, you'll see that there's some guidance suggestions related to the role of the Design Advisory Panel for some of these aspects, and just to explore what the opportunities are, so we can ensure that we have good quality design moving forward.
That would be great. You know that that would be something that I'm very, very concerned about.
I know you like DAP.
Yes, I love DAP. I want DAP to have more power.
It's a very good segue for our next work session, so I look forward to that. Sorry? Oh, okay, next, next work session, my bad. You have memorized them all. I have outsourced that to the piece of paper on which the table lives, and I check it. So, we'll be back for fiscal analysis and environmental. And then we'll go in to dynamic and quality. So, thank you all very much for your time today, and we look forward to gathering together again. We are adjourned.